It's telling me that the BOE guest is temporarily unavailable.
We're watching out, Jane.
It is?
Want to tell her to get out of it and come back in there.
Yours is working, Steve?
Yeah.
As far as I know.
She would like.
Yeah. We got a corner.
I'm just saying.
We got four, we're good.
We're good. Let's move forward.
Can everybody join us for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Let's give him a round of applause as he walks in. Come on up here, Greg. You're good. We'll wait on you. You're a VIP, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jane, do a roll, please.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
So everyone, we have to do a real short waiver hearing and then we'll start the regular board meeting, okay?
So, we are looking at a professional development waiver for the next five years. So we currently have a waiver for four full days and then we had two half-days of school improvement. Next year, we would like to move into having five full days of school improvement with no student attendance. This would allow us greater opportunity for training and professional development for our staff, as well as as accommodate for students who need childcare and families.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, I'm gonna need a recommendation. There's no action at this part of the committee. We'll approve it later in the regular meeting. But I will ask for adoption of the professional development waiver later in this meeting. Do we take any action at all, just that's it?
Just adjourned. Will we open for public comment?
Okay. Any public comment on the waiver? Okay. We'll adjourn for this meeting the professional development waiver committee. I need a motion and a second to end that portion of the committee meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Desha, roll.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll open the regular board meeting. We've got some guests that we'd like to recognize. First, we'd like to have Jessica Larson. Recognize her for cross-country state qualifier. This is four years in a row, right? That's what I thought. Fantastic. You're also gonna be recognized in the second part and we'll have you come around, shake everybody's hand, okay? Did you wanna do one photo?
I can get her at the very end, but we'll get everyone else.
Okay. Second part of this, we want to recognize our Illinois State Scholars. As I call your name, if you don't mind to come and fill in this horseshoe portion here up here by the table. Kristen Armstrong, Malana Benavides, I'm sorry about that. Shawn Buckman, Morgan Sikander, Ashlyn Davis, Adam Flack, Emily Gruel, Isabella Harkins Alvin, Sarah Herzl, Liliana Jackson, Tyler Jensen, Emma Jones, Logan Jones, Gabrielle Custer, Tyler Lake, Jessica Larson, Sidney Nelson, Harsh Patel, Peter Rosen, Raiden Snyder, Morgan Springer, and Andrew Wagner. So to qualify as an Illinois State Scholar, it's a combination of their class rank and SAT and ACT scores. And only 10% of the high school students in the state of Illinois qualify. So please give this group a round of applause for their accomplishment. Becky, ask you, did you wanna say anything about this group or as a sponsor or?
Um, I would just say if you wanna go around and say your post-high school plans, that would be great. And just to thank the parents and thanks to staff and all of your hard work.
My name is Sarah Herzl and I shared my experience with Luntis Tennessee. And then I'm going to succeed after I got here and then after that I got here at the University of Tennessee.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hunter. I'm going to the University of Alabama to major in accounting. And this summer, I'm actually going to go to a local job.
My name is Chris Martin. I'm a sophomore next year. I'm a digital marketing analyst.
My name is Ashlyn Davis and I plan to go to Southern Illinois University at Wiltshire.
My name is Owen Jones. I'm a major in engineering.
My name is Sean Flack. I'm gonna go to chemistry and functional area.
I'm Adam Flack. Thank you mom and dad and I'm gonna go for math somewhere.
I'm Will Flack. I go SIUC and major in finance.
I'm Mike Trager. I'm going to SIUC and major in art.
I'm Peter Rosen and I want to get my masters in physical therapy.
I'm Harvey Tullow and I'm a major in physics.
Tyler, that's a major in environmental engineering.
I'm Tyler Lake. I'm gonna go to Lakeland and major in engineering.
Hi, I'm Lily Jackson. I plan on doing something somewhere.
I'm Olivia Roll. I'm going to go to Lakeland and transfer to Washington State University.
I'm Isabella. I'm perfect Alvin. I come from the Greenfield University. I'm a major in tertiary education and a fanaticist.
I'm Jessica Larson. I'm a major in biology.
I'm Sidney Nelson. I plan to go to the University of Arkansas. I have a degree in environmental science and.
I'm Maurice Spanier and I'm gonna major in psychology at SIUC.
Thank you guys so much. Yeah, if you guys wanna come around, we'll shake your hand and then we'll get a picture, okay?
Congratulations.
I'm smiling.
Congratulations.
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 Anyone else? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you parents as well. Appreciate you being here. Do we have any visitors that wanted to address the board this evening?
These students are more welcome.
Kristen, Emma, are you sure? I know them so well, I can pick all of them out of there.
Absolutely.
Uh, okay, we'll go next to the financial report from Mrs. Baker.
Sure, looking at fund balance, we're showing a 2.67% increase over last year with a net fund balance of $30,230,504. And the operating funds were showing a 2.46% increase over last year with a net total of $28,958,660. For revenue received this month, local revenue, we received $388,631. State revenue, we received $690,428. And federal revenue, we received $412,012. Those expenses over $5,000 are broke out separate in your packet. So recommendation would be to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $3,328.62 and the payment of bills in the amount of $901,754.42.
So I know we all received the packet in our, in our board packet, the financial report. Any questions from the board on that? If not, I'll need a motion and a second to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $3,328.62 and the payment of bills in the amount of $901,754.42. Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Erica.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, we move on to the consent agenda. You will see various minutes enclosed from the different committees. The cafeteria report, we don't have any student teachers to review at this time. Fundraisers, field trips. There is a, an approval for the Arrow Pest Control contract. Approval for the donation to St. Louis Community Foundation for Bullheart Early Childhood Center. Approval for donation from Sportspackers for a new volleyball system for a central grade school. And there's also some information in there. I hope everyone saw in regards to increasing the officials of the referee pay by Mac Thompson and Ben Chor. We were a little behind on the rates for our officials that we needed to coincide with the rest of the conference. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, if not, I'll need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Desha.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Moving on to correspondence, we have a number of correspondence items that I can pass around for everyone to take a look at. Again, we appreciate this feedback from everyone. And so if you have a chance, you can review those. I'll take those now. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Unit forty, foundation report from January thirteenth meeting. Really truly highlights from that meeting are committee reports dealing with scholarships, breakfast with Santa, net profit information from there was actually $8,000 this past year. They're looking to switch to a new web provider. Stanfield was moved, moved to nominate Borali as president and second by SISNA. Really was the bulk of that meeting for the foundation. Our enrollment at this point right now, as of twelve thirty-one, total enrollment is 2,0296, which is eight students less than the previous month. But it is fifteen more students than we had the previous year. And then we had, we actually did have one full year request and it's enclosed or it's dealing with the Retired Teachers Association, which is a pretty standard full year request that most school districts receive. And that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Uh, now we're back to, well, new business and we're back to the professional development waiver. This is the waiver that Mrs. Baker reviewed earlier before the start of the regular meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the waiver of the school code 105 ILCS five slash ten dash nineteen point five D. And a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Steve? Second by Erica?
Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Next, we have a number of facility items. You may recall in the past year, we've been discussing a lot of different facility and infrastructure items, especially leading up to the school sales tax vote that we had back in November. These items are still very necessary for the district. And so the facility committee has identified a number of items that they are recommending that we start to take action on, either to approve expenditures or to start the bidding process. And I'll run through these items. If you have any questions about any of them specifically, just let me know. But the first one here is an approval expenditure of up to $350,000 for two to three, two to three-year rental on modular classrooms at Southside. We're also looking to accept bids for the Central Library update for the summer of 2026. Approval and seek bids to replace all parking lots at EHS. That would be concrete, asphalt and concrete in the summer of 26 potentially. Approval to seek bids for replacing the north parking lot at Central, same timeframe, summer of 2026. Approval to seek bids for replacing the parking lots at the sports complex, again, summer of 2026. And then we go to seek bids for Central Gym Floor renovation and bleachers for summer of 26. Approval to seek bids for fixing north side fence at West Side School. Approximately $100,000 there. Again, we're seeking bids to confirm that amount. Approval to update the junior high baseball field to include concrete, bleachers, announcer's booth, concession stand, windnet on the fence and new scoreboard, approximately $160,000. Approval to fix fencing at Central Pond for, I guess this would be at Central School, there's a pond out there to the west for liability purposes, that fence needs to be replaced, approximately $25,000. We may be able to do that internally with Todd Taylor's team, which we appreciate all your team does and the numerous projects they've done throughout the district. So at a future meeting, we'll have to discuss our options and how we will fund these different projects. Obviously, it's essential for us to continue to move forward with a number of these projects because the district needs to fulfill those obligations. And we'll talk about those different funding options at a later meeting. At this time, I need a motion. Are there any questions, I'm sorry, on those projects from anyone?
I think the only thing that I would add to that maybe, Chad, is the importance behind people understanding about the mobile classrooms, that which was item number one that was addressed. Please keep in mind that at one point, we were discussing a K three-two building. With that lack of the sales tax passing, we're now in a position that we don't think it's in the best interest for our students. Didn't think it was prior to now. But we wanna be in a position to be able to move second graders, all the second grade classes, back to the same property as all the other second grade classes. So we ask Damian and Orion Savage with Holland and Todd, of course, with my administrators, to help us figure out what is that. Unfortunately, it's mobile classrooms. My emphasis, I believe the committee's emphasis was either two or three years. You cannot do, I think maybe we discussed at the committee meeting, contractors won't do a two with a third year. It's either a two-year contract or a three-year contract, was what we found unfortunately to be true. Our hope is that we would rent those. At this point right now, there's a significant difference between renting and this price that was given was, is renting them for two years rather than purchasing them. It's about double if we were to buy those.
So we'll get a bid for renting two years and renting three years?
Correct, yes.
And then I think the other piece that I would like to make sure is, is definitely heard is the benefits that, there's several benefits to obviously this taking place that I asked our administration about. Just the overall experience for all second graders to be in the same building, to be able to be with their classmates, be on field trips together. Some of that kind of stuff was very, very difficult, or still is very, very difficult with the setup that it is. And then at the other, other end of that, we also have the opportunity to create some more space. Even for some staff that are sitting in the room here that work at Central and do a great job for us. Unfortunately, they put in and not so good, not the best of setups with space. And this will allow us to be able to put some more space in that building for intervention work and things that really, really can set us apart in helping us grow our kiddos. So I don't know if Damian or Jessica or Todd or anybody have anything else to say about that, but that's pretty much what we're looking at. Okay, thank you all for your work on this.
Yeah, we appreciate all the time that's been spent studying this and so on. And I know sometimes we forget the, how things have changed over time and what it takes to properly educate our team, our students. And we need to do the best job we can to support that. So any other comments, questions? Okay, I'll need a motion and a second to approve the district to move forward with the facilities recommendations from the Facility Transportation Committee.
Motion.
Motion by Erica?
Second.
Second by Desha?
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Moving on to, we're looking to add a second B-team for the junior high volleyball. We need to add a B-team junior high volleyball coach to the already amended August eighth, 2024 MOU with the ECTA. This addition was due to the increased participation number, numbers in our junior high volleyball program, which is a great problem to have. And so hopefully, we have someone that would be willing to fill that slot so we can continue that, the growth of that program. So any questions on the addition of the volleyball coach in junior high? If not, I'll need a motion and a second to approve the addition of a second B-team junior high volleyball coach to the August eighth, 2024 MOU. I'll make that motion. Erica, second.
Erica?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Next item is the approval of some hand tools, a saw, a saw stop and a laser cutter. EHS request for hand tools, saw stop and laser cutters approved by the, what does that stand for?
EFS.
EFS?
Basically the vocational, regional vocational group that gets federal and state.
That's the best name they come up with.
I know.
All right. The EFS office on twelve. This total request is about $16,300. We will need to make the purchase and then work with Amy Miller at the EFS for reimbursement. Cost may be a little higher if items, costs have changed. But again, this is, is this Ty Taunton's group? Coming through that group there?
Yes. Yes.
And this is a big opportunity for us to continue to support the trades programs at the high school for all the students. And so I think it's important for us to support this. Ty has done an amazing job with this, as well as his support of the ag program, FFA. And so any questions on this equipment or the lasers? I need a motion and a second to approve the purchase of hand tools, a saw stop and laser cutter, approximately $16,300. Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Erica? Roll.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
The next item is some approval for facility work at West Side School. Basically, we've got some blacktop at that facility that is in a pretty rough shape. It's become kind of a hazard for them to deal with, as well as just can be a distraction with students and so forth. So we've reached out to Hillt Landscaping and Mattoon for the work. And basically, we're estimating that cost or was there a bid?
That's all run through easy. So all I'm asking you do is to let, because they rent our property, let them move forward. They got the bid, they'll take care of all the expenses of it. We're not in it for anything. I just want you to approve, because we own the property. I just want you to approve the work to be done and paid for.
Oh, I see.
Through, through easy.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second to approve the easy pay, easy to pay for them and move forward with the facility project with an approximate cost of $31,529.
Motion.
Motion by Erica, second by Steve?
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha? Steve? Erica?
The next item is a topic we've discussed a couple of times in previous meetings is about an agreement with the Workman Center Fitness. It's a Workman Center Fitness Agreement at the Workman Center for Unit Forty employees. And it's an opportunity to seek membership at the Workman Sports Complex beginning February first, 2025 through June thirtieth, 2025. District would pay up to $20 a month for an employee to seek an individual membership during these months. And let's see, it would cost the employee $5 a month, their portion, and would be paid to the Workman Sports Complex. The district would also be willing to pay up to $20 a month for employees to seek a family membership during these months that will cost the employee $21 to be paid directly to Workman Sports Complex. The motion is second to approve for the district to provide all Unit Forty employees the opportunity to have membership at the Workman Center with the district paying a portion and employee paying a portion as discussed. Costs will be absorbed by the teacher vacancy grant, if at all possible. And I think this is a great wellness benefit that a lot of other employers offer their team members, employees. So I would support this. Any other questions or concerns about this benefit?
We surveyed the staff before Christmas to find out how much interest there would be. I believe I received about 268 responses. And I would say of those 268, probably 75% of them were, didn't have a plan or they had a plan and were interested in jumping in on this. If they did already currently have a plan, which was paying more than this, then the Workman Center is going to drop their plan to this low rate and continue that with them. So it's, it's, it's a pretty neat venture. I would guess that we're going to be in the ballpark of roughly 200 either individuals or families that will pick up this opportunity. And we are seeking a grant. We've got a grant that hopefully we'll be able to pay for all of it. But I didn't want to put it in the grant until it was approved. And once it's approved, then we'll put it in the grant and see where it goes. If it doesn't get approved, then we'll utilize grant money for something else and find a way to meet the obligation of what we committed to tonight.
You've put together basically a trial period. So it's February 1 through the end of June. We can evaluate the program, make sure it's beating the, or the expectations and how much participation we really have with the program. And then at that time, we can determine whether to continue it another year.
It also fits into a wellness drive that we would encourage our employees to, to try to take some time away and go work on elliptical or something instead of, we have meetings every night. Anyway. Hey, just food for thought.
Will we see you there?
Yes. Matter of fact, I, I said yes to it. So I, starting this week, I'll probably go.
That was the elephant in the room.
If I get too big for this jacket, you're going to understand it's your fault.
So I'll need a motion and a second to approve this Workman Center Fitness Agreement.
Motion.
Motion by Erica?
Second.
Second by Steve. Roll.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Uh, the next item, you can see it's been part of the agenda, is the approval for an AP Computer Science Principles Course. It provides an elevated computer science course offering. We propose the AP Computer Science Principles for students who are interested in computer science-related field and are students who are seeking an additional math credit. This course will be coded as both AP and CTE. This will provide a second AP opportunity for students at the high school. Any questions about this program?
It's kind of evolved a little bit from last year. You approved us to start the, the computer science classes. I think they've gone really well and very receptive this year. And so this is kind of tweaking a little bit of that, so.
I need a motion and a second to approve the proposed AP Computer Science Principles Course Offering at Eppingham High School, beginning in the 2025-26 school year. All motion. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Erica?
Chad?
Yes.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jane, yes.
That concludes the open portion of the meeting. We'll be moving to a closed session. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Erica, second by Steve.
Desha?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad?
Yes.
Chad, can I say one thing for you?
Yeah.
Before I leave? Because I guess that's how it's worked, isn't it? If you didn't have the opportunity, last week, some of us had the opportunity to be at the high school and Charlie Hoover and his multimedia students made a wonderful presentation. There was gosh, all kinds of things. And it really is exciting. And I know those kind of things go on every week. But I got to see this one and it was first grade. So I just wanted to let you know.
It's well attended, too. We had a lot of community folks there, which was neat for our kids. I didn't even get to talk to our kids because there were so many people, which is okay because I go talk to them every day, right? So it was neat to just see that, that amount of people that were there. Had about eight or 10 kids, I believe, showing their projects. Which was, what was your favorite? Did you have a favorite?
My favorite? That was tough. Gosh, I don't know. It was, I don't know, Michael wrote a song and another young man wrote a poem and an essay which was leading into a short story and a novel. There were so many great things. It was hard to choose a favorite.
I did stop at one. And, and mine was the gal with the computer with the picture and had taken frames and was telling me that this is how movies are produced and they go frame by frame. And she's working on some, it was neat to see her. But like, how many frames are there? There was about 40 frames in that. And it was just going from like, somebody turning their head practically or blinking their eyes through, through her computer right there and continually doing.
There was one guy that stopped action. Well, he had, anybody as old as me remembers him being pokey and things like that. It was just cool as heck. And you know, he had a big zillion photographs to make that thing happen.
Right. Yep. No, that was a good point.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thanks, all.
Yes, thanks, everyone. There will be a few items after closed.